Now, and our next item on the agenda this evening is the Children's Enrichment Project.
Back begging for mercy, tail between my legs.
Motion to come back.
First one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to come back.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we're back.
Motion, say your own favor.
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right.
We're back.
So, the sidewalk, the sidewalk that we had two discussions on. The applicant agreed to it, maybe under false pretenses, but regardless, we looked at pricing of it, and the pricing just on the concrete side alone was upwards of forty thousand dollars. And there's also some grading that would have to be done out there. The right-of-way is pretty small in that area as far as where the right-of-way line is and where the edge of pavement is, and then you have a set of utility poles that go through. So, from the edge of pavement to right-of-way line, they're like six, six and a half feet, and you've got a set of utility poles right in between the edge of pavement and the right-of-way line. If you look at it, there's some guy wires that come off the edge of the poles that would have to be extended out and relocated further into the property. The pricing behind it was high, and financially for the applicant, tough to swallow. It would delay the project if they had to move into the installation of that sidewalk. Just looking at the properties to the south, we have a pretty large residential property that remains vacant. And then moving more toward the Poughkeepsie side, we have an existing residence that's there. And then we have the post office and deli. In those areas too, the parking lot in front of the deli is up close to the right-of-way line. So, we basically have a residential piece, a private club parcel, residential piece, and then another deli with a parking lot in front. So, just looking at the aspects of it, in future development, we'd be asking the board for a turn of its relief from the installation of the sidewalk, and we can provide an easement that if such time of the properties on the other side of us entered into development, that we could have connectivity with that easement here.
I'll leave it up to everybody else, what's everybody's thoughts on this?
And just from like a, from a use standpoint, this is not a commercial business. This is not like a retail where we have traction coming out from clients coming in. This is just a, just a private club, no access to the public.
No.
Just for.
I don't have an issue with it, I have it there. Seems like it's excessive for what it is, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they really kept, my PO box was there for years at the post office. You can't, there is no space to connect, you know?
You guys feel? You feeling towards it?
Yeah, we could take the easement, just in case, right?
What do you guys feel is good, really? I mean, the object of the game is to get sidewalks on that side of the street all the way through the hamlet so that it could be walkable.
We did.
That's what the comprehensive plan says.
So then that's.
And as projects come up, that's what we do, is we have sidewalks, you know?
But all we can do is ask, we can't force them?
It's already part of their condition.
It's already in there, it's a condition of the approval as of now. They're looking to remove it, which would take a new resolution to be drafted.
And we understand that, we did agree to it. I think the premise of the understanding behind it on the applicant's side, they have not been clear. And knowing that, they looked into the construction costs of it. Again, this is not a business, this is a, this is a club organization. So, we don't have that retail, we don't have that, that income coming in from an outside source. So, the financial constraints just were extremely high.
I mean, this is a, I mean, it's a difficult, it makes it difficult because of the, you know, it's an area in the town they're looking to put sidewalks in. I mean, even if, even if the easement was granted, the problem comes in at some point, who's going to pay to put it in? Yeah, it's, you know. It's unfair to have the town come in and put that in.
Plus, we got the other projects we approved that we had them, we had them put sidewalks in.
Yeah, we did do that.
Yeah, there was kind of the thought of getting.
And if we start not putting sidewalks in now, then nobody's going to put sidewalks in.
Right, yeah.
If we stick to our guns and any of these new projects, put sidewalks in, we'll have sidewalks all finished in a few years.
Your sidewalk's going to go nowhere.
Do you comprehend the plan?
Um, what's the lifespan of a sidewalk, or what's the?
She needs to.
Oh, it's not, it's not a public hearing at this point.
I understand that, but wouldn't that be part of consideration?
Instead of.
No, a pretty long time.
Yeah.
Seventy-five years.
Concrete, concrete could last.
Sixty, seventy years.
Yeah, right, it could last fifty years. Not any issue, yeah.
I don't think we should do that.
I mean.
Yeah. Makes me wonder if they just agreed to it back then to get the resolution done.
Right.
Well, that's basically, that's basically where we were with it.
Yeah.
Right, we asked, I think the pricing behind it was astronomical. For something that's not connected currently.
I mean, if it's, even if we just, let's say we agreed to an easement, but also another condition in the site plan approval, that there'll be no, there'll be no addition, be no additions, no additional conversions of work on the property unless that's put in. So, let's say like the barn eventually gets repurposed to something else. You know, they can put that on the table at that point, because I believe currently it's just for storage only. So, if they were to repurpose that for whatever it is, I mean, then it could, you know, this could be re-entertained at another time.
I think that's fair, fair to the applicant, because of the amount of money that it's taking, that it's going to take to just bring a building up right now.
And then they'll be, they'll be aware on the front side that if this project does go, let's say they decide to do something in the future, that not only are they planning on doing this, they'll be also, you know, funding it to do that as well. So, it's on the front side of the, on the front side of the project. You know, again, that's, I don't know if that's, if anybody else agrees with me on it, but I believe that's a possible compromise. You know, the easement's one thing, somebody, at the end of the day, somebody's still going to have to pay to put the sidewalk in the ground.
Right. I mean, if we hadn't established with Gasland, that's the issue there.
No, no, I under, I understand that, that I do.
But that's also across the street, and.
It's on the same side of the street.
It's on the same side of the street, but it's across, to the north.
But there's no, there's nothing, well, commercial from between there, on the other side, right?
Yeah.
There's a.
Basket shop.
The deli's on this, the deli's on the.
Then there's the one property that may be developed.
Yeah, the deli's north though, right, of the building, of the place?
Oh, yeah, there's nothing up past that.
Right.
They're the last one on the, on the line.
Right, right, so like I'm saying, there's no, there's nothing commercial, including them, nor, south.
Nothing south of them, no.
But there are properties for sale, so. There are properties.
Commercial properties?
Yeah, there's a bunch of them for sale up, up nine D, yeah.
So, they may be.
Yeah, but they're all to, all to the north of this property.
It's near Gasland.
Well, there's going to be gaps in the residential, and if there's a residential, if there's a house, there's going to be gaps, right?
Right. So, but, you know, but again, my, so my proposal is if we do it, if they propose any future expansion, you know, and again, there will be, at that point, there'll be some type of, you know, track history of what's going on on the property. So, if they're looking, let's say this becomes, you know, let's say there is a lot of, you know, there are a lot more people than what were originally anticipated. There ends up being a lot of foot traffic going from that property down to the deli for some reason. They come back, they're going to have to come back for the barn to be converted to additional space, which would be an expansion on what they currently have. At that point, if they wish to expand, then that expansion would kick in, the sidewalk requirement. And that'd be, I think that's a fair proposal, and just leave it at that, because at that point, if it costs forty thousand dollars today, and then they come back in ten years and it's now sixty thousand dollars, that's on them.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, that's, that's the, ultimately, at the end of the day, I think that might be a compromise. I mean, the easement, as much as it's a good idea, it's just who's going to build it out at the end of the day, you know? If DOT was decided to do this, you know, they decided to do that up and down Route 9D in that area, you know, that would be part of their project, they would do it, they would obtain all the easements that they need in order to put the sidewalk in. You know, it's not a town road, so it's not like the town's going to physically go there and do it. You know, again, there's no, there's no benefit to the town to, you know, to do that on that piece of property. So, to alter, to alter the resolution, the way I'm proposing it, it still holds it in force, and it bases upon their expansion of a project, or expansion of the use on the site, which they can absorb that cost into their next project.
All right, I'm good then.
Does that everybody?
If you're going to.
To clarify, so, should they come back, they will need, in the future?
Should they come back?
They will need to build out the sidewalk.
For any, for any expanded use on the property.
Do we still want to take the easement in the meantime? On the, on the chance that, yeah, I mean, I think that it's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, but like you said, if the county, county road, if the county does something, they're going to obtain easements anyways.
Well, it's a state, so it's a state.
I mean, state, I'm sorry.
Right, so.
But the state would have to buy it.
One of the things is if there is an easement, the easement would go to New York State and/or Town of Wappinger.
Okay.
Actually, probably include the county, because technically, highway takings are done by the county for the state. So, or at least they used to be. So, the easement would be to any of those jurisdictions. That way, should there be a taking, as you mentioned, you know, if there's a taking in the future.
Right.
For a sidewalk along that stretch of 9D, they're not going to have to, the state's not going to have to.
Compensate, yeah.
Compensate, and then I guess also we could put in the easement that they're not going to contest any condemnation proceeding for that easement.
So, do the easement too then?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea to take that now as part of this application.
So, we alter, we alter the resolution on the item I discussed, and in addition, provide the easement at the front of the property. Fair enough?
Fair enough, get your seven easements?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, Malcolm, because we're going to have to vote on another resolution, on an amended resolution, correct.
Do you need, do you need to have a plan set to vote on that?
Well, I think we should have a plan set that shows the easement.
Yeah. Do you want the description too?
Yeah.
Because that would fall, yeah, because the easement would fall in as a condition of the, of the approval. So, if you were.
And that'll be noted, you know, you can note it also on the plan.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, all right, so we have to vote on this. So, so as we previously discussed regarding the, the change in, the change in resolution and the adoption of easement, I guess we may make a motion to approve.
So.
Our previous discussion.
All right.
Second. All right, motions made, second of all, favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, none, motion carries.
So, just let me be clear, so these are conditions of this resolution, and the applicant doesn't have to come back?
Yeah, we'll alter the, well, we already voted on the one resolution, so.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying, this is an amendment to the previous.
Amendment to the existing resolution regarding the two items we discussed this evening.
Okay, and then the applicant doesn't have to come back, he just has to submit the plans that are, that's noted.
Yeah, submit the plans or back watch, okay.
Right. You don't want to come back?
I think that they just did it.
Okay. All right, good night. Okay, next item on the agenda this evening is site plan and special use permit for Verizon Wireless Communication Facility on Didel Road.
Good evening, my name is Scott Olson, I represent Verizon Wireless. So, here tonight to present the application for the first time. Hopefully you all have it and have in front of you, or had a chance to at least go through it. We've got about nine or ten exhibits in there to support what we're trying to do. Basically, what we're looking to do is build a new communications facility off of Didel Road, a hundred and twenty-foot tower, who would be a monopole tower. It's set pretty far back off of the road. I think the property may have been referred to as the Corbin Farm at some point, maybe it still is.
This is actually, the Corbin Farm is actually two parcels over. So, there's, there's a number of parcels that are in the name of Corbin, and one of the questions was, there were, so, sixty-five Didel Road, which was the subject of an enforcement proceeding, was owned actually by two, was owned by the mother, and then descended by administration to two brothers. This property is actually, was bought by Sid Corbin independently of that farm. So, that was one of the concerns that, you know, we had originally was whether or not, you know, there were additional owners to the property, because parcel access had indicated just Sid Corbin on the other one. But on this property, I just, I went through the history on parcel access, and Sid Corbin purchased the property, I want to say in two thousand and four, and then transferred it subsequently to the trust. One issue that did come up in this title search, in two thousand and fourteen, there was a memorandum of a lease between Sid Corbin and New Singular Wireless.
Correct.
Okay, is this, is this kind of that same lease, or is this a different?
So, the leases are not related.
Okay.
The owner, I saw the same title report, I saw the same memorandum of lease, and.
By its terms, I think it was five years.
It never even commenced.
Right.
Having said that, as Verizon's attorney, I said, you know, let's make sure.
Right.
I think we have, we may have an owner's affidavit from the owner stating that this, we've never gotten money, it never commenced. So, as far as we're concerned, that easement is dead in the water.
Okay.
I don't know what happened with it, but it was, whatever they did, they did not pursue it. Having said that, we would like to pursue our site at this location. We have, you know, huge areas that don't have adequate service. Our closest site is the, is at the airport, it's up on a pretty good hill, about a mile and a half away or so. The nearest site after that is three miles away. We have a huge area, and we'll have the RF engineer here at some point, maybe at the hearing, to explain that it's an Exhibit Five. I'm not going to waste your time with it, but we have significant gaps. We need significant, we need several more sites in other surrounding areas, and that's what we're working on now. This just happens to be the first one to come to fruition, so that's why we're here. So.
All right. So, I guess with the application, I guess there's a couple of questions we have, I guess, regarding, number one's a balloon test, just to, you know, establish the, you know, to establish a height, you know, and visual aspect from the neighboring areas. We had a little discussion earlier regarding some of the locations.
I heard, I heard it, I.
Okay.
We have no, I mean, we are more than welcome to this, we have no problems with any of the issues, just so your edification, what we do with the balloon test, we don't limit it to any specific town. So, the fact that, you know, we know we're really close to La Grange, we don't look at town boundaries anytime really. So, the balloon test will be done, we generally take, it might be a mile, two-mile radius, and that's the primary focus of the balloon test. So, we will include locations within La Grange, and we're happy to, you know, listen to any locations that you may have, that you want looked at. I always tell our people, they always look at me, I said, film is really cheap, so we'll take as many pictures as you want, if you're not using film.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, just so you know, your letter stated it was a three-inch balloon.
I know, I heard that, and I shrunk, and I said, son of a gun. That'll be corrected, it's a, it's a three-foot weather balloon, a three-inch balloon, that would be interesting. Wouldn't be interesting, you wouldn't see it.
Greatest invention ever.
What, I'm sorry, what?
It's the greatest invention.
Yeah, right? No, we wouldn't do that. So, we have a notice, we did, the one issue is your zoning law is, it's not, I'm going to say unique, but has very specific time requirements for the notice. It has to be published fourteen days and seven days, and my good friends at Southern Duchess refused to put me in for Wednesday, so I can't technically make the fourteen days with that paper.
Yeah.
And, but I was, my thought was, well, I'll, I'll put it, and they only do once a week, I'll put it in Poughkeepsie Journal, it'll be thirteen days and seven days, and I'll put it in Southern Duchess seven days and do the best we can. And even with that, because it's weather-dependent, you're never going to always have a fourteen and seven days, because it depends on the weather.
Right.
We could, we're planning for the nineteenth, and it could be a horrible weather day, and we notice it for the next available good weather day. And we're happy to keep the town informed about when, you know, we'll give advance notice, usually a day or two before, saying, oh, the weather looks really bad, so. But anyway, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, I don't see, Jim, any concern with that, that philosophy of publishing it that way?
Let me just look at the section.
And while you're looking, I'm sorry, and the other thing is, I can, I can make it fourteen days, because I think I can get it published, whatever it is, if it's the nineteenth, it won't be the nineteenth, we'll just have it on either the twentieth or the twenty-first. I want to get it done before the end of April, because your leaves are going to start popping pretty soon.
Right.
And usually by May, it's just too late.
Yeah.
Not too late, we would still do it, but I'd like to have the leaf off condition, if I can, so.
No, no, great, I think it's, it might be better, you know, just to get it at that point, to kind of, to get a better visual on it.
Yeah.
All right, so, that's good. Do we really want to, do we want to talk about the locations at all, Malcolm? I think it's.
So, from what I understand about your methodology, you're looking at your study area, you're looking at what is topographically precluded from that, you're going to investigate your study area by car on the day of the test, and take photographs where you see the balloon.
Correct.
Okay. In particular, I know that in the pre-meeting, we had talked about the rail trail just being something that you should consider, because it would not be accessible by car, but it would be something that you would want photographs of, for that visual impact assessment.
I'm familiar with the rail trail, and we will have our engineer consultant look at that.
We'd also looked at maps, and we talked about a couple of different roads, we can list those to you unless, I mean, from what I understand about your methodology, you're going to be driving along all of these roads.
They do, within, yeah, like I said, within.
Within a two-mile.
Two-mile radius. And they, they have their computer maps that help guide them, but they still drive the roads, and they'll even take pictures of locations. You don't see it, just to say, hey, we didn't see it, we were out in that direction, this is proof of it. So, they will, I think I wrote down your, the roads, Lewis Road, Laurel Park Road, so I've seen the maps.
Yeah.
It's, we see where the residential areas are. Luckily, this is not real close to them, but it's close enough, but we're looking at it.
I would also not want to give you that list, and for that to be an exclusive list.
No, no, no.
You're going to be investigating far more than the list that we talked about in the pre-meeting, so.
Absolutely, in fact, what I tell our, my consultant is, I want, you need to look at a list of aesthetically important resources, receptors, if there are any, and you, you need to go to those, because they're public, and take pictures and investigate that. So, we'll be doing that, making sure that that's done.
Now.
The rail trail will be one of those, by the way.
The, one of the other considerations that I know that we did with the last cell tower was that we're curious about the view of the cell tower from the neighboring property lines, and to avoid, you know, needing to get permission to cross those property lines, the solution is to stand on your side of your rear property line and have a photo from there.
Okay, I think we certainly can do that.
Okay.
Not a problem.
All right, yeah, the other thing we discussed too is, we're probably going to, we have in the past consulted with a separate RF engineer, just to evaluate what's been submitted, to get their opinion of the project, and no objections to that, assuming, okay.
No, in fact, I think I heard you, I think you used Doug Fitchman.
We've used Doug Fitchman in the, in the past.
Yeah.
And I just, I don't, there's usually not too many people out there.
No.
That are doing it, I don't know if he's still doing it, because that was a few years ago, and I remember that was actually, we had David Stolman, I believe, was still a planner back then, and he even, I guess David had a conversation with him, and wasn't sure how much longer he was going to be doing it.
Yeah, I know, I can't, I ran across him in Poughkeepsie a year or so ago, maybe, so, he was doing it then, I don't know if he's still doing it now.
Yeah, and that's, and that was my other reason, because I know that Poughkeepsie, they're the last project that went through there, which was probably only, probably six months ago. I know that they did hire a different consultant.
I think he had an issue with some insurance.
Okay, yeah.
Possibly.
So, I mean, it'll be, so we're, obviously, we're going to, we're hiring somebody just to.
Sure.
To take a look, and just to verify that the documentation, you know, it represents that there is the need.
Absolutely, and what we always suggest, if it's okay with the board, is that, let's let, you know, if your engineer has any questions, obviously, they're going to talk to you and give a report, but if they can talk together too, a lot of times, they do their engineer talk, and they resolve issues without getting us involved.
Okay.
That's, you know, they'll still do the report for you.
I think, yeah, I mean, let's get, we'll get, let's get the report first, and then we can, we can address that.
No, that would come first, absolutely.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, other than that, I don't think, I don't have anything, does anybody else have anything?
No.
That they wanted to bring up at this point?
No.
Okay. John, do you have any issues?
No, 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 we're, we're still in the process of reviewing it, we, we weren't informed that this was going to be on the agenda till late, so. But I did look through everything, and I didn't see anything that jumped out as, you know? These things are pretty straightforward from an engineering standpoint.
Okay.
Site-wise.
You've got my memo.
I got it today, and I went through it, and we'll make the changes.
I think it's all, that you can do it easily, yeah.
Exactly, we'll have those changed and submitted, we'll submit revised documents.
I think there's some wetlands in the property, but it's to the rear that's might be.
Yes.
Like, there's no crossings or anything on the road?
No, not that I'm aware of, no. No, so.
Yeah, I looked at the, the wetlands, it didn't look like they were anywhere.
That can be a problem. So, we'll get it noticed, and then I'll just confirm with the board, the specific date, if you care to.
So, with respect to this section, it says, "Within thirty-five days of submitting an application, applicant shall arrange to fly or raise upon a temporary mast a three-foot diameter brightly colored balloon at the maximum height of the proposed tower. Dates including a second ca, second date in case of poor visibility on the initial date, times and location of the balloon test shall be advertised by the applicant at least seven and fourteen days in advance of the first test date in the newspaper with the general circulation in the Town of Wappinger." So, you know, Poughkeepsie Journal would work. So, I think, you know, as it says, shall, so.
Yeah, we'll adjust it then, and I'll get a new letter out to you, so I'll make sure that it's fourteen days.
Yeah.
It's either going to be the twentieth or twenty-fourth, I don't know, forget, sorry.
Okay.
We'll arrange that, so make, make sure that's the case. Of course, the weather messes it up, again, I can't.
Right, right.
It sounds like you could circulate with fallback dates.
But we do, so what.
But then that's also.
We'll say if it's, if it's going to be the twentieth, okay, if it's a bad weather day, wind, and usually bad weather means obviously rain, or wind usually eight miles an hour is getting close, but if it's ten miles an hour above, they scrap it, because the balloon's blowing too much, so, but, but we have some, we'll be in contact with the town.
And then it says, "Balloon shall be flung for at least four consecutive hours."
Right.
Sometime between nine AM and five PM.
Yeah. I typically have been told the morning is better, because before the sun gets up and starts messing around with the atmosphere, it could create some wind, but I'm not the expert. That's what I'm told. So, we'll probably do it between basically nine and one-ish, we'll make sure we have the four, so.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, I think we, I think you have a game plan of how to move forward here.
Sounds good, and once it's completed, we'll do the report, submit it, and then we can, whenever we get out on the next agenda, we do.
Okay.
All right.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
You too, thank you.
All right, so our next item on the agenda is an architectural review for, for Heritage, um, pergola on the patio.
Good evening.
Hi.
How's it going, I'm Jesse Kamak, owner of Heritage in Wappingers. We're here today proposing a shading solution for, uh, for our patio. To give you guys a little bit of color, we've been there for six years. We get direct sunlight on the side of the building, like, almost all day, so if we don't have shading, we really can't serve guests out there in the summer. For years, we've used umbrellas, um, almost every year, we gotta get rid of them, just due to wear and tear, we don't have great storage over there. But I think most importantly, not that it happens all the time, it's just a public safety issue. Regularly, there'll be certain winds where we don't have time to break it down. Almost every year, we either have a broken window on our building, or a car, or something like that. We always pay out of pocket, it's not an insurance claim or anything like that, but our fear is that someone's gonna get hit in the head one day, it's gonna be raining out. So, we think what we propose is not only aesthetically pleasing, it matches the building, but we think it's a safe solution as well. Planned on, you know, we, initially, this started as a kit, we were gonna buy it, and after talking to Sue Deo, she thought potentially it might make more sense to build it, but we're gonna work with her hand-in-hand on that. It's not supposed to catch rain or anything like that, those are, if you look at the picture, it's got a, a shade sail on top of it. So, the idea is it's not gonna hold any water, and it should run through, it's really just for shading, it's not meant to catch any water or anything like that.
Okay. All right, and then this is, um, this, so this is covering the existing patio area there, that's there now.
Correct, it's the existing patio.
So, we're not, we're not expanding the patio area at all.
Correct, we're not touching the physical patio, it's existing, and it's just going over one side of it that gets the direct sunlight.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions?
For me personally, it's a ground ball, I think, nice, nice, nice proposal.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You got it.
Yeah.
It's not even a second thought for me, thank you.
Oh, it's good. All right. Is that steel frame on there, or...
No, it's not, so, my partners are in construction, they came up with the design and the build of it. They were renovating a house recently, and they wanted to match a black metal, and what they ended up doing is basically creating posts, but rather than using big wood, they framed it out with metal, and then put cement board on it, and actually, it's a high-end stucco product that looks like metal. So, it's not gonna be too heavy, obviously, we're gonna secure it to the ground, um, and make sure that Sue is happy, but it has a metal effect, but it's like a smoothed-out stucco, um, that they've had a lot of success with on other projects.
Yeah.
For your own safety, heavy, uh, snow weight won't be an issue?
That's what I was looking at.
We're talking with Sue about like, yeah, about snow loads and wind capacity and all that stuff, and we basically, we said, we want it to get approved today, or can, and have her on how to build it, or how to buy this kit, and, uh, obviously, if it just doesn't work, or it gets cost prohibitive, we won't do it. We're gonna make sure it meets code and safety.
Or maybe resubmit something, wanna pitch to it, or something like that?
For sure, yeah. I mean, the only parts that are actually gonna be able to catch rain would just be the, the six-by-six or eight-by-eight frame. Everything else is really hot, it's a shade sail that we can take down in the winter, so it's not gonna, only that would actually carry snow would just be the top, and those are gonna be, you know, six-by-six or eight-by-eight all the way around.
So, the sail comes down.
The sail comes down, it's just gonna be a clip system, it's really truly fancy, uh, awning. We're actually gonna get an awning, it's just that they don't have ones big enough that would cover this area.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, the most substantial part of it is just the frame itself.
Yeah.
The sail, the, the fabric sail gets replaced, you know, as, as it wears out. Yeah, and that's taken down in the wintertime, so it's not gonna accumulate the snow.
Yep.
You know, summertime, when it rains, it's just gonna, you know, eventually it'll pass, it just passes through for the most part.
Yeah, 'cause this, the snow will creep up on you quick, it's like a, it's like a hundred pounds per square foot or something like that.
For sure, we're happy to, we obviously, we build it, we wanna maintain, if it's snow, we're gonna brush the snow, we have to, but we'll make sure it meets whatever requirements Sue says.
Yep. All right. Everybody's good with it?
Yeah.
So, entertain a motion to approve...
Make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
The plan as submitted. Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you so much, have a good night, guys.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. So, with that, we're down to the end of the agenda. Is there anything else that we wanna discuss this evening?
No.
Okay, so seeing there's nothing else to discuss, I entertain a motion to adjourn. So, move.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?[1790.51]